This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Echols?
Here.
Councilman Stewart is also absent today. Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed is also absent today. We do have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business and I will ask David Lawson to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we're thankful for another day. We're thankful for the opportunity to come out and serve in the capacity that you would have us to follow in your guided footsteps. We ask that all of the decisions made will be made with the benefit of the entire city and the county at large in our minds. We ask that everything we do may be that much of a step to making things better. We ask that you continue to have your hand at our federal government level. We ask that you continue to watch as trouble brews overseas and around the world. We ask that we be mindful that we do these things for the benefit of common man, that we may elevate each other in a way that you would have us to do so. And we do these things in the name of your Son, Jesus, and we are thankful forever to give him the praise. Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the mission of liberty and justice for all. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the council meeting on October the 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of September the 30th through October the 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none today. This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property at 620 Turntown Avenue in District 5. This is for demolition and the amount is $6,126.3. The last known owners were Wendell El Jolly Mortgage Electronic Registration Systems Incorporated on behalf of the lender Homecomings Finance Network Incorporated. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
10 is our final public hearing on a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for Twisted Cowboy LLC doing business as Twisted Ultra Lounge. This is for a Class 1 retail, Class 1 lounge retail liquor license at 504 Broad Street in the former White Palace Cafe. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
11 is a resolution awarding bid number 3179 for rehabilitation of a structure at 2415 Sansom Avenue. The purchasing department is recommending awarding the bid to mint and frame and finish in the amount of $6,850. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
12 is a resolution reappointing members to the Argyle Circle Architectural Review Board. This reappoints Edwin Edwina K Cooper, Philippi Miles, and Ernest D Cordell Jr. to terms expiring July the 20th, 2014. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
13 is a resolution authorizing grant agreement with Gadsden State Community College. This adds the East Broad campus front lawn area to the lease of GSCC property used by the city for the Edward Youth Soccer Association. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Robert must not be here today. Oh me. New businesses, are any new business?
Mr. President, I have two items that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. Legal document number 2011, which is an ordinance amending the fiscal budget 2012 to buy audio and video equipment for the police department.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The second item that I would like for unanimous consent to consider today is document, a resolution authorizing retain of Enzo Haney and Johnson McCordle to represent the City of Gadsden in a case of Chief Roy Harbin against David Thompson Civil Service Board hearing that will be done today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I have a couple of items that I'd like to bring up today. The first one being a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Gadsden and Game Time for construction of the new Nakalula Falls playground. I ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. So this is again involved with, this involves the new playground that's being developed and the improvements that are being made to the Nakalula, Nakalula Falls Park. As you may remember, Jack's agreed to give us $150,000 and of course the city is going to come up with the balance to help with this development. So it'll be a good, it's going to improve the aesthetic value of the entrance to the park and really improve that area up there. So we're excited about this.
Is any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I have actually two items that I'd like to ask for consideration to consider today in tandem. One being a resolution accepting a grant for the purchase of 27 vests for the police department from the Bureau of Justice. This is a 50-50 match grant. And the other being an ordinance amending the budget to consider these fines. So I ask for consideration today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution and the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution and the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both items.
Any other new business? Apartment reports, committees, boards, identity. Citizens request Alice Thompson, public safety. Alice, you know, please let me share your remarks.
Good morning. My name is Alice Thomas. I live at 1312 Fourth Avenue. I'm talking about public safety. There are three areas in the city. Police Department, Fire Department, and the Educational Department. I remember in 1946 and 47, Gadsden was the fourth largest city in the state of Alabama. But Gadsden had steadily declined. And the reason for most of its decline is racism, is discrimination, and corruption. You cannot progress if you don't do things right. We don't have, we had the storms this winter. We don't have anywhere people can go if they need to go to safety. All we have is a siren that tells us that the storm is coming. And a lot of this is negligence. But racism is a mean human being. And when you don't treat people right, there's mistrust. And we have all of this arguing among the mayor, the police department, the civil service board. But you know why we can't come to some kind of agreement called don't nobody, trust nobody? Well, there is no trust, there can be no coming together. And you know, when you mistreat people, it causes them to mistrust you. And I see a pattern we have in the police department. We don't have anybody that looks like me within authority. We got some in the police department that sitting up in the window, but they're just window dressing. You, there isn't hardly any white person who couldn't go to some of their friends on the police department and get a favor. But I can't do that because there's none of us on the police department. And I'm talking out of my experience. I've been arrested more than any thug or drug dealer in Gadsden. But it was because you wanted me to shut up and I didn't. So every time you got a chance or I said something you didn't like, I was upstairs. And when we appoint people to positions, they are supposed to have some character because character is who you really are. But reputation is what the people say you are. And it's time for Gadsden to put away its racism and its discrimination and move on. I've been in Gadsden all my life and I've experienced this. And in my neighborhood, there's no police protection. And when you call them, most of the time they don't come. And I had a bad experience last year. I'm gonna tell you about it. There was some, three white boys came to our neighborhood and was going to rob the lady across the street. We called the police. They came out, they got the truck, they got the gun, they got the boys. Do you think that they have done anything to those boys? Did they come back and investigate and ask us any question? Did they question the lady across the street where the robbery was about to take place? The mayor can verify what I'm saying. And you know what? I got a reading, somebody come and told me, Ms. Alice said, "They not gonna do nothing to them boys. At 11 o'clock Thursday night, they gonna turn them loose." I called the mayor, he wasn't in. I came down here. He was supposed to call me, but I know he get busy, he didn't. So the next morning, I came to City Hall. And you know what the policeman that came to our house told us? Well, we can't find nothing to charge these boys. We just beating the books, going through the books, trying to find something to charge them with.
Alice, your five minutes is up.
So we need, we need not just part of us, all of us, you know? We need to learn how to treat each other because ain't one man no better than the other. And you know what? We all born and we all gonna die. And we all gonna have to stand before God and answer to our own actions. And until such time as we learn these things, we gonna always be in trouble. Because you can't do wrong always and get by.
Thank you, Alice. Remarks by the mayor and the council. Johnny, you want to start?
Yeah, just like to remind everyone tonight, Tuesday, October 11th, at 6:00 at Banks Park, we'll be having a District 6 meeting. Everyone's welcome to come out. Also too, the Saturdays, what we all been waiting on, it's Music on Megan. It starts at 6:00, goes from 6:00 to 10:00. We've got four groups lined up to sing down there and hoping the weather be pretty for that. And October the 27th, which is on a Thursday, we'll have our annual sheet of Gadsden and Alabama City Merchants sponsored trick or treat on Wall Street. That'll be 5:00 from, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM that night. Expecting anywhere from 1,500 to about 3,000 kids down there. Want everyone to come. And I will say, if this has been a quiet meeting today, Bob, I don't know, these other guys have been gone, it's been a quiet meeting.
You just jinxed it.
It's not over yet.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. We still have a couple of minutes here.
Well, okay, I'm gonna turn it over to y'all then.
Thank you, Mr. President. So do want to remind everybody that October, and I think this has been alluded to in previous meetings this month, the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and most of us at some level are touched by this very cruel disease, in particular as it relates to breast cancer. So we ask that you go out and I think there's a line of items, Susan G Coleman for the Cure items that are out there that can be purchased and all proceeds go towards breast cancer awareness. I had a friend of mine who actually purchased a tie for me here recently. And so again, I encourage everybody where we can and in whatever way we can to help raise awareness, help make contributions to, towards the cure for this very cruel disease. You know, do want to also mention that I think the jobs bill, the President's jobs bill is supposed to go before the Senate today for a vote. It's a $447 million bill that is designed for us to, for the government to try to drive job growth. I'll get on my cell phone for just a second and then I'll leave this alone. You're always in a bad situation when you're really depending on federal, the federal government, state government, or city government to try to drive job growth. So for those of us who have this notion that job growth is the responsibility of government, we're missing it. We've got to do something to help job creation and create a situation where private investment is driven and there's an environment conducive to private investment. So a lot of what you see this city doing relative to fixing our budget and getting our balance sheet in order involves us trying to get to a point to where we're healthy enough to leverage the debt that's needed to draw investment. So always understand that and know that because again, that's our, that's our goal. When someone comes knocking and they want to develop a piece of property in the city, you know, i.e. the river or any, any piece of development, we want to be healthy enough to help engage them in some kind of development. So again, let's be mindful of that going forward and reach out to your senators and congressmen and ask them to support that jobs bill because again, without that, there's no incentive for private investment to, private investors to create jobs. Thank you.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to comment on the Sickle Cell Walkathon that was held this past weekend, this past Saturday. From all accounts, it was a very successful event, very good participation. And now you will be hearing from some of the chairpersons of the Sickle Cell Foundation in the very near future, and they will be coming to the city to give you a full report and to thank you for all the cooperation that was given during this, during this period. I can assure you of this, that the goal was set at 25,000. They have well surpassed that goal and it's continuing to grow. So look forward to hearing more from Ms. Edwards, Mr. Zachary, or Ms. Timmons concerning that event. And I would say to you, thank you, Gadsden, and thank you, city, for your response and for your cooperation during this event. I will be having a District 1 meeting Monday, October 17th at East Gadsden Recreation Center at 6:00 PM. Chief Roy Harbin will be there and he will be there to answer any questions, any inquiries that any citizens may have. So I invite all citizens of District 1. And if you really care to attend and you don't live in District 1, you're also welcome to come to this meeting because information that's given by the chief can be used by all of us. So if you want to come out, come on out and join us. That's all I have. Thank you.
The mayor and the council invite the public to ribbon cutting at the groundbreaking, and groundbreaking ceremony for the Black Creek Trail this afternoon at 1:30. Cascade Creek at the Nakalula Campground, if it's not raining. If it's raining, the ceremony will be held in the wedding chapel. Mayor?
In the past few weeks, there's been a lot of information and a lot of opinions, and most of the information has been misinformation. So I want to set the record straight about a lot of things that's been on my mind for quite a while. In talking about the civil service board, the chiefs, the legislature, the council, and the mayor. First of all, when the former chief left, I asked the city attorney and the civil service board attorney about appointing an acting chief for continuity and to make the police department run smoothly for a while. Both the city attorney and the civil service board attorney sent me a letter saying there was nothing in the civil service handbook to keep me from appointing an acting chief for an indefinite time. I don't think you'll find that in the newspaper. A few days later, I went to the civil service board meeting and asked for Captain Roy Harbin to be appointed acting chief, and the civil service board agreed. Captain Harbin, a 38-year veteran who has served at all levels of the department during his career and has always been very cooperative, was appointed acting chief. After appointing Captain Harbin, the civil service board decided to begin a search for a new chief immediately. I then asked the board to wait for six months to a year because we had a lot of issues in the police department. We needed some time to get the issues corrected, and I felt like that with somebody who has been in the department for 38 years and experience would be the one to do that. The city council and I were 100% behind Captain Harbin, as we, as were the majority of the policemen. I think at the FOP meeting where there was a headline said, "Police don't want that", there was only about 24 to 27 people showed up out of about 100 or plus. So that wasn't even 25%. I don't guess anybody bothered to check the number of people who really showed up. At the next civil service board meeting, the city council and I expressed our desire not to rush to hire a new chief in a civil and respectful manner. However, there was some disagreement. The council and I tried to explain the many reasons we had, but they disagreed and set a date for the applications to be submitted. The next day, a headline in the Gadsden Times read, "Temper's Flare at Civil Service Board Meeting." I am told by the reporters who write the articles for the city that they do not choose the headlines. I think this is very misleading and irresponsible for someone to make headlines who don't really even come to the meetings, have never talked to me or any of the council. They really don't have no clue as to what's going on. It was important, one of the very misleading and many statements were left out of the article. One of the most important was the legality of appointing an acting chief for an indefinite period of time, as I mentioned previously. An editorial in the Gadsden Times dated October 9 blasted the mayor and the city council and had many misleading comments. The Gadsden Times has now made this a fight, which it is not, between the civil service board and the mayor and the city council. The issues lay with the local delegation, our state legislators. We're not mad at the civil service board. I know they think they're doing the right thing by the law. But those two letters I got also was by the law, and I asked before I did that. The Gadsden Times, I'm sure there must be an agenda there somewhere for the sensationalism and all the distortion of facts that they have. And there is no fight, I repeat again, with the civil service board and their right to hire a chief. The problem is, we have 15 directors who work with the mayor when there is a problem as well as budget issues. We always sit down, work things out. I've never fired any director. If you fire a director, they still have just cause if you, if you don't have good reason to fire one. But you know, when people work with you, you can always work something out. When the police and fire chief, who are also directors, they only answer to the mayor and the council when you take them to the civil service board to file charges. And that is very expensive. The total budget for police and fire is $19 million plus. The total employees is 276 people. The police and fire departments have the most employees and the largest budget. But because of a flawed and outdated system, if a chief chooses not to be cooperative, they can scam the system. If charges are brought before the civil service board, legal fees can cost the taxpayers up to hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it is automatically appealed to the circuit court, which could cost thousands more depending on the length of the trial, the delays and postponement if that person asks for an appeal. That's part of the law. It has to go to the circuit court. The real question is not the civil service board, I've already talked about that. As far as I can tell, we are the only city to have an antiquated system where the chiefs are not under the mayor, as all other directors. No one wants the police and firemen to be under the mayor. The editorial in the Gadsden Times said we were pressuring the legislature. We did. In a professional manner, the city council and the mayor's office passed a unanimous resolution to ask the legislators to remove the police and fire chiefs only from under the civil service board. Usually when the governing body asks a local delegation to pass a local bill, they follow through unless they're worried about some kind of political pressure. It is between the mayor and the city council and legislative delegation to work this out. I think the taxpaying citizens deserve better than to have a law that requires spending thousands and thousands of dollars to dismiss a chief who is not acting in the best interest of the citizens. This is about public safety. And it's more important to work with the mayor and city council when we get repeated calls about a problem, such as public works, parks and rec, or any other department. We do not wish to run the police and fire departments, but when there is a problem, we want to see that it is given proper attention. That is our job. When I ran for office, it was because I was tired of the politics and clicks and I felt the city was going in the wrong direction. There have been many, many problems we have corrected, and considering the economy, we have more jobs, more training, more police... have more jobs, more training, more police, more firemen, better services, more activities, balanced budgets, and three months of operating money. There have been four raises in the last five years for our employees. How many other cities can say all that? Very few, if you read even the national news. There have been no layoffs and no cut in services, along with the addition of many commercial and retail stores. We have changed many things, and we have had resistance. Because of these changes, we've been able to move this city forward without cuts in anything, as many other cities and states and counties have had to lay off and completely do away with whole departments. The situation is not workable. It is costly, and there is no smooth process. I have not fired any directors, as I've said before. And when we have problems, we sit down and work through the issues. You cannot fire anyone without just cause. Please remember that. The problem will not solve itself. If we keep doing the same thing, we will continue to have the same results. And I want to point out a few things that really disappoints me about the editorial, and whoever the editorial board is, I've never met with them. They've never called me to ask me a question. They've never come to see me, or any of the council members. Have they ever come to talk to any of you, the editorial board? You know, it's easy to sit in the shadows and throw rocks when you don't have to stand up and face the music. This is one comment in the editorial from October 9th, when it's talking about our meeting with the Civil Service Board. It wasn't pretty. In fact, it was rather embarrassing. Here's another comment. "The pushing from the council and mayor hasn't worked, and on Wednesday, the frustration boiled over, mostly from council members." I take offense to that. If you were at the meeting, they weren't. Nobody raised a voice. Nobody argued. It was disagreement, but it was civil, and it was orderly. We didn't have to get the police in here to separate anybody. It was none of that kind of stuff at all. Nobody was threatened. Also, another spoke of pressuring legislators into changing the law. And the editorial says, "We'd like to know what weapons the mayor and city council could bring to that fight." See, they're all through this, and everything that's been written is trying to be a fight. Well, we asked the legislature, which was proper by passed 100% resolution, to change it. So I don't know what was so bad about that, how it's considered to be a weapon. Another blasted the police chief's job description, which was done by the personnel director and contained stiff requirements. Well, that's the only problem there is, it does contain stiff requirements. But if you get a chief who don't want to cooperate with you, you got to spend thousands of dollars to go to the Civil Service Board, and maybe then, if he loses, or she loses, then you have to go on to circuit court. And that could go on for two or three years. We don't need that kind of dissension and that kind of problem, especially costly. When you start spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, we could be spending that on some projects, taxpayers, getting a new business, or whatever. I think it's ridiculous. Another said, "The opportunity for the council and Civil Service Board to work together this issue had been wasted. They made a decision, we told them how we felt. Our next step is to go to the legislators, the local delegation, and that's what we plan to do." But I want the citizens to know, the people who pay our salaries to know what we're trying to do here. It's not a takeover of any department, I assure you, let alone police and fire. But it is about public safety. Let's see. Another one blamed the media for the controversy and seemed to support hiring a chief behind closed doors. I really take offense to that. I know our city clerk published everything. We have any kind of meeting, zoning, public safety committee, education committee, finance committee, anything is always published. And we have, since I've been in office, all the city council meetings on TV for everybody to watch. I would hope that some of these on the board, the editorial board, might consider looking at the council meeting sometime on TV. But they may not live in the city of Gaston, I don't know where they live, so they may not have cable. It's on Channel 99, if anybody's interested. Let's see. "To call this a circus is an insult to the memories of the Seven Ringling Brothers, P.T. Barnum and James Bailey circus." I'll tell you what's a circus, is when you have a headline that says, "City revenues are down," and one department was down 1%, but all the other departments were above revenue projections. And when you read the article, I had a lot of people ask me, "How come they're saying that your revenues are down? It was only in one department, but the total picture was not like that." There it goes again. Maybe they hadn't need to talk to somebody. "An argument can be made for the civil service law needs to be revisited and changes made to give the mayor and the council a voice in the hiring of the police and fire chiefs and the direction of those departments. We have consistently advocated that all through it's, although it's growing more difficult to say this particular administration after scenes like Wednesday merits that responsibility." I'll tell you, that is the most ridiculous statement I have ever seen in my life. The Gaston Times editorial board is trying to influence where things go and sensationalize the headlines so they can obviously sell some more papers. Because everybody I talk to hasn't seen this because they don't take the paper anymore. "We think city officials yelling and screaming like petulant kindergartens who can't get their way and more to build support for them. They're standing up for principle in their sheer stubbornness. The process that's in its place should move forward, revisit it when the shouting stops." I haven't been in a meeting yet where there was any shouting or disrespect to anybody, and I would like for the citizens to speak up. That's who I want to speak up. If you want good public service from the city hall, and when you call about complaints, if the mayor and the council doesn't have some direction over all the directors instead of not having it over the police and fire, I don't know if you'll get it or not, just to be honest with you. Thanks.
Mr. President, I'd like to say something. Very brief. So I appreciate the mayor's comments about that whole process, and I support him relative to that. But one thing I want people to be mindful of, and I think this was missed in that whole discussion. One of the things that really drives the council's position on this is not to undo or unravel the Civil Service Board. We respect the job that they have to do. But one of the things that concerns us is that, is why they are in such a hurry. There has yet to be a clear definition for as soon as practicable. We asked that question. The Civil Service Board attorney couldn't necessarily address it or directly answer it during the course of the meeting. We're still waiting an answer relative to what as soon as practicable means. Does that mean six months? Does that mean 12? Does it mean 18? Does it mean 24? I think we should take whatever time the law allows us to be deliberate in making sure that we make a good decision going forward. At the end of the day, if we are called to support the current process, then this council and the mayor will. But until then, we're going to exercise every opportunity that we have to state our position. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. That, again, as the mayor pointed out, that is what's called civil discourse. And at the end of the day, we support whatever the end result is.
I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.